All right, I would like to call to order the Rackliff City Council Work Session for Monday, March 7th, 2022 at 5:00 PM at Rackliff City Hall. The meeting is being held here on the second floor of City Hall and is being streamed live on Facebook. If you will rise for invocation, remain standing for a pledge.
All right, let us pray. Father, we thank you for letting us gather here tonight in order to move this city forward. Father, we ask that you encourage our mayor as he leads this city and give wisdom and guidance to each of these council members as they look at decisions for this city. Father, we ask that you bless us each and every day and guide us and direct us in all that we do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to welcome all of our council members. Hope everybody had a good weekend. We are going to start here. I'm going to turn it over to Councilwoman Toshi Merle. You have a guest here that's on our agenda to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I have today. I've asked Joy Keely. She is the founder of the Link Coalition. And also, she is a retired lieutenant with the Louisville Metro Police and 41 years in law enforcement. And I've invited, it's the Kentucky Link Coalition. And I've invited her today because I met her a few months ago when we had the Animal Advocate Roundtable. And there is, there is a link between the, a human interpersonal violence and animal cruelty, animal abuse. And in talking with her, after I met her, there was just a recent passing of an ordinance in Louisville that she'll talk a little bit about. And I'm not saying that for this body that we are necessarily looking to enact an ordinance that pertains to this link, but it is something that I think we should look at as far as safety and other related, I guess, concerns for our citizens and for our community. But I also think in speaking with one of our local judges, some other child advocates, Mike McNutt, our animal control officer, our chief of police and our chief of our fire here locally, this is a program or at least something that I'd like to see us talk about, work on, and certainly be thinking about how we can implement something into the city or into the county. So with that, I'm going to let Joy explain further because she's definitely more better than I am. Thank you, Joy.
And if you'll just pull that mic over towards you. That way the people at home obviously can pick up on it.
As is.
I'll let Tim tell me.
I'm a good speaker.
Can you hear that?
Can you hear me?
Okay, you're good.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Merle and all the council members for having me here today. I appreciate you listening to what I have to say. You have in front of you exactly what I am going to say, just for future reference. So I won't, I'll get into my credentials, et cetera, but I will say that my, the goal for the Kentucky Link Coalition's are to, first of all, to provide education on this link, to facilitate and the community's multidisciplinary collaboration in assisting families and their pets, and to promote public policy in the interest of protecting vulnerable members within a family. That's my goal. I was a Crimes Against Children's Unit detective, I was a Domestic Violence Unit detective, and I was a sex crime detective for both children and adults. And I saw this link. So when I retired, I said, now, I'm taking this statewide, okay? I want people to know that if they see a neglected animal out back, there may be a neglected child inside. I can't stand the thought of a victim being left behind. I truly cannot stand that. So this is basically why I'm here today. And this is not just my opinion, I want you to know that. The National Sheriff's Association, the International Chiefs of Police Association, the FBI, Department of Homeland Security, and a whole long list of other national organizations, the US Department of Justice, the National Counsel of Juvenile and Family Court Judges, all have published about this link, okay? So this is not just my opinion. There's 35 years of research behind what I'm going to tell you today, okay? In a 2017 study by Andrew Lockwood, Randall Lockwood, it found that 82% of animal abusers commit other crimes. In order of frequency, it's intimate partner abuse, familial abuse, assault, child or elder abuse, drugs, weapons, gambling, and gang-related activity. The last three primarily are due to animal fighting. But as you will note, the first three are violent crimes against family members, okay? In my study, I'm in year three of an animal cruelty study in the state of Kentucky, and in my study, in 2018, the most frequent co-occurring crime with animal abuse was endangering the welfare of a minor. This is in Kentucky, okay? I'm using Kentucky statistics here. In 2019 and '12, the most common co-occurring crime with animal abuse was domestic assault with misdemeanor assault forth up to and including murder. In 2019, there were four murders associated with animal abuse. One was stranger, and three were interpersonal violence. Once again, the FBI has also had done studies on this, and in 2018, they found that 60% of all animal abuse offenders engage in domestic violence prior, concurrent to, or following the cruelty abuse. Now, what I hear a lot when I'm out teaching, which I do across the state, I hear, oh yeah, they start with animals and then they move on to people. That's probably exactly true with sociopaths. It's not true with interpersonal violent offenders, okay? As the FBI clearly has stated here. And offenders who had children, lived with children, or had children present at the time of the animal abuse offense had higher rates for child, higher rates of arrests for child maltreatment. The FBI found that interpersonal violence preceded animal cruelty 23% of the time, but the cruelty followed interpersonal violence more than 73% of the time. So it refutes the graduations theory, which I just talked about. The three main contentions that the FBI found was children who abused animals were more likely to become violent towards people, towards humans, as they grew to be adults. Adults who abused animals were more likely to commit interpersonal violence. And animal cruelty in the home typically indicates there is concurrent interpersonal violence. That's the biggest message that I had to give today, okay? Several studies of women in domestic violence shelters have shown that women put off entering a shelter for fear of what will happen to their pets. 71% of domestic violence victims entering shelters report their pets were threatened, harmed, or killed by their partners, such as, if you leave me, I'm going to kill this cat, I'm going to kill your cat. We, in Jefferson County, for example, we had a man who was sending videos of him abusing his ex-partner's animals because she left him. So he was sending her videos of that, okay? So this is a unique form of abuse to harm pets in order to exert control, prevent partners from leaving, and coerce the victim to return. And this is often done in front of children, causing emotional abuse of children. Domestic violence causes emotional abuse of children. Animal abuse in front of children causes emotional abuse in addition to the actual abuse of the children themselves. It all causes emotional abuse. Domestic violence victims were eight times more likely to report their partner threatened or abused their pets. In a study of incarcerated men with histories of domestic violence, found that 81% perpetrated animal cruelty in their lifetimes, 85.7% were exposed to animal cruelty in their lifetime, which coincides with what the FBI found as far as children who abused animals were more likely to abuse, grow up to abuse people. And 38% used threats against animals during their relationship, and 52% had abused or killed a pet during a relationship conflict, once again, through domestic violence. And this does not always happen, this has not only happened to children and to adults, domestic violence victims, but it also helps, happens to seniors. For instance, one humane officer in Ohio said, elder and animal abuses go together so often that when I see one, I automatically look for the other one. APS, Adult Protective Service workers, report 35% of their senior clients report pets being threatened, injured, killed, or denied care by a caretaker. They may threaten to injure a pet in order to gain access to the person's assets. And we've seen that in Kentucky, certainly have seen that in Kentucky. 45% report seeing evidence of intentional abuse or neglect when visiting their clients, and 75%, once again, the same way with domestic violence abuse, violence abuse victims, note that their clients' concerns for their pets caused them to refuse services or housing. The more, basically, the more loved a pet is to the victim, the more vulnerable it is to abuse. That's what it sums up to. It is all about preying on the vulnerable, and this is what you get in domestic violence. It's all about power, control, and abuse, and that pertains to whether the vulnerable is human or an animal. Now, I've got to say, interpersonal violence is a societal issue, and societal issues always require a multifaceted approach. You can't enforce your way out of it, you can't cancel your way out of it, you can't do one single thing and get out of a societal problem. It's a multifaceted approach that works most effectively. So first of all, recognition of the abuse, the different types of abuse, and the ways in which abuse of different species relate to each other is integral to an effective protective strategy for interpersonal violence victims. The overarching goals will always be to protect the victims in the abuse and in the violence. So identifying ways to provide additional support to these victims should be ongoing. For example, those seeking protective orders in Kentucky are provided with no information on how their animals can also be protected, none. It's not contained in the, it's not specifically mentioned in the protective order petitions, nor is it mentioned in the How to Obtain a Protective Order Manual published by the Kentucky Administrative Office of the Courts, which is used as a guide for those seeking protective orders. Also, providing a list of resources to help victims of domestic violence with their animals, such as the County Animal Shelter. I know that the Kentucky Humane Society has two programs called Safety Net and Safe Haven that are applicable within 60 miles of Jefferson County, which I assume includes Rackliff, correct? One of the things that I learned when I talked to the Center for Women and Families in Jefferson County was that they didn't, these victims could be able to get to the shelters by means of buses, cabs, the police giving them a ride, et cetera, but they didn't have a way of moving their animals to a safe location. So that was one of the things that we addressed in the Jefferson County Ordinance, was to allow police and animal control to take their animals with them to a safe location. And we also created, creating reporting requirements for animal control for when they see these things. We encourage multidisciplinary cooperations between social services, law enforcement, and animal control. Further, this is pertinent to legislative bodies such as you. Pending a proposed legislation should consider, be considered in a holistic way to better aid both animals and people. Even legislations such as the cost for care, which is being voted on right now on the Senate floor of the state Capitol, can have repercussions in the protection of humans, seniors, animal, I mean, seniors, domestic violence victims, and children. For example, cost of care, what cost of care does is it provides a mechanism for forfeiture laws to provide a hearing in animal abuse cases, determine whether there is a probable cause of the seizure of the animals. If so, the court can assign an amount to be paid to the county, which will save every county and every taxpayer money. Paid money to the county of rescue for the care of the animals by the defendant or to allow the defendant to forfeit all rights to the animals. This allows jurisdiction which may be reluctant, jurisdictions which may be reluctant to act on hoarding cases due to lack of resources, to do so with the expectation of either receiving money for the care of the animals or to have the ability to release the animals to rescues or to adopt out to the public within a short period of time. Now, considering, this is where the link comes in, considering the possibility that children or vulnerable adults could also be living in toxic hoarding environments, and they are toxic. They have been, there have been hoarding situations where the whole building was condemned, okay? That's how toxic these hoarding situations get to be. And there are children and vulnerable adults living in these environments and experiencing neglect or other forms of abuse, the impact of such a law designed solely for animals could also have a profound effect on the health and safety of humans. Further, and lastly, I'll say that Jeremy Betham, an English philosopher and jurist, stated, "The question is not can they reason, nor can they talk, but can they suffer." The next question we should be asking ourselves is, who else could be suffering by the same hands? Too often, we focus on the species of the victim when instead, we should focus on the abusive nature of the perpetrator. That is what links this all together, is the abusive nature of the perpetrator. It is important for the health and safety of all vulnerable members of our society that we take a holistic approach to training, legislation, response, and protective measures regarding the abuse on federal, state, and local levels. The crimes are there, we just need to look. The voiceless and the vulnerable deserve our attention so that no victim is left behind. Thank you.
Thank you, Joy.
Any questions?
And let me just add, the reason that I wanted to start this conversation with our group here, with the city council, and with also with the county, I've already mentioned it to Chief Cross, I've mentioned it to Chief Henderson. Joy does training. This is going to be months maybe down the road. This is just the conversation, this is why we need to be having this, is because what passed in Louisville just recently, in Louisville Metro, the ordinance, did you tell me that was the first in the state of Kentucky?
The first in the United States as far as the training went.
The training, so...
It's the first in the state as far as being a link law.
A link law, so...
The first link law in the state of Kentucky that was passed.
And she helped instrument that, obviously, that document. I'm not saying we're here to try to start having ordinance, but in talking with Chief Henderson, and maybe he can add some of that, at some point, and I don't want to take any more time today on this, is to start the conversation, to say at some point, I think it would be in the best interest of our community to have some training, even if it's just a couple hours a year, or something that you can identify child abuse, elderly abuse, with animal abuse, all in the same because they are connected. And that's the whole reason why I want her to come today. And in talking with Chief Henderson today, I think he would be on board with that. They're always looking for some new training. I'm sure we'd have to get with you, Mayor, but this is going to be an ongoing conversation. Today was just the beginning. So I thank you for that.
I also want to say that the reason why this law was introduced was because of a 10-year-old special needs child that was murdered by his mother in Jefferson County. She tried to cut his tongue out, and then she shot him to death. This is allegations because the case has not been adjudicated, but she had been charged three times with cruelty, second to animals, in the 18 months before she killed her son. So a victim was left behind, and he died away. That's the thing I'm talking about today.
Thank you.
I got a question. How does it, like, when the ordinance passed, how does the training, like, what's the outcome or what's the, if you start from beginning to end, the ordinance is passed, I'm assuming that local ordinances then would allow the officers to do certain things, watch for certain things? Is there law set in place that allows those officers to kind of co-mingle when they see stuff like that going on?
Yes, in fact, that's part of the, they are required to
Okay.
Under the ordinance, to report animal controls required to, if they have suspicions. And that's one of the things that I always hear when it comes to child abuse. And I couldn't prove the child was being abused. It's not your job to prove it, and it's not animal control's job to prove that a child's being abused or a senior or a domestic violence victim. They are to report suspicions and let somebody else prove it, okay? And that's what the law, one part of the law is designed to do.
So that, that's where that comes in at.
Yes.
I was just trying to see how that, you know, one time my child fell off a counter when he was little, we had to go to Norton's, obviously, because he fell off, he was trying to get a snack out. But, you know, they bring someone in, they ask you a ton of questions
Oh, yeah.
Just to make sure. So I'm assuming that's kind of the same area where the questions are asked, people come in.
Absolutely. They, the same thing happened with my daughter, broke her arm. Yeah. And I was a child abuse detective then, you know? But I'm okay with that. I was totally okay.
Yeah, we were fine with it. They just wanted to make sure, you know? Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Anybody else?
Thank you, Joy.
All right, thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move on then. Chief, you out there? Chief Cross, are you? Got your ears taken up a little bit? Get you a haircut? Last time I seen you. Come on in and talk about some policies and procedures.
Good.
Okay. You probably have to pull it a little bit closer to your ear.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
You're good. All right, we got four policies that I'd like to bring to you all for next week for approval. First one is arrest and citations slash e-citations. Y'all have that document? Yeah, we got.
I don't know if you've had any time to review there and if you had any questions about it.
Jeff, just, Chief, if you want to just, before you get into the policy, I know some of the council members are new and haven't been through this process yet, do you want to just start, just explain to them the policies and procedures and how we come to these and then
Yeah.
How we attain some of these?
Sure, Mayor. We operate under our rules, regulations, policies, procedures, general orders, and these are the directions that we provide our officers on how to do things and our employees, even the civilian employees. And many of y'all may be familiar with those that may have been associated with the military. Our policies and procedures are primarily come from the International Association of Chiefs of Police, IACP, Kentucky Association of Chiefs of Police, KACP, and League of Cities. And these things are all vetted through all of those entities before we get them. What we do with them is we put them under our format and arrange them to fit our needs. You know, we may be a smaller department, and they may have some things in there that we don't utilize, that don't pertain to us because we don't have these many branches, you know, like a dive team or, you know, something that they may have in there with, or things like that. Forceback police or something, we take that stuff out if it's in there. Most of them don't have that stuff, but there's some large agencies that do have those things. But once we get them, we have them fitted to our format. Angie and I go through them. We give them to you all, and Michael Pike gets a chance to look at them too and make sure that these are all the way they should be. So they go through a pretty good scrutiny of vetting before we get them and put them out to you all.
Any questions on that?
Yeah.
So this date is March 15th, '22. So your officers are using, you update this version, like you replace the old version and you update this version?
Yes, some of our policies, and they're good policies, but they go back in time quite a ways, and they might not be under this format, and they might not have this much detail to it. So what we're doing now is, any of those that we haven't had before, we're replacing those to update, and updating all the information, change of laws or case laws may have changed policies, and so we bring these to you in this updated version. Most anything you see in here, we have something on the books that we generally operate under those procedures. But this is pretty, pretty good detail in how we do things. So some you will see that are brand new, once in a while we're bringing one that we've never had in the past. But we've also, we've always had an arrest policy that we've, you know, a procedure that we've abided by, but we just updated all that information to provide everything in the one, as far as that policy goes. The domestic violence policy is generally governed by the original policy, but there's always case laws, there's always KRSs that are updated, and we've got the latest information from all that in this one here. Now, this is a new one here, this link, NCIC, CEGIS inlets, this pertains to our dispatch center and the information that we run through our computers, Lincoln CIC and things like that, that govern how we handle that stuff and how we're, you know, make sure that we abide by the laws that we get to abide by. So that is brand new, that was one, that's one that's not replacing anything. Search and seizure on residences, this is one we needed to update. We've been operating under these primary procedures, but we needed to get that in writing, so we've gotten that one out too that updates the information that we've gotten on that. If you see the word amended, you'll see it on that cover sheet or the front, or first page, that'll tell you that one's being amended, and it's not brand new. Any questions?
Anybody got any questions, Chief, regarding the policies? You all have, obviously can take them, look through them, send questions, you can reach out to Chief Cross for the next meeting, and then it'll probably be on the agenda for...
I just have one more question. So is this an annual update or in the event that we, down the road, six months, we work on a program or we work on some sort of a training that is not part of this domestic violence package or a part of the link of looking at interpersonal violence versus animal abuse? Is there something that, then, can you just add a page to that that says, we're going to train on that, or this is what you look for?
Yes, and however it turns out that the ordinance, if we have an ordinance, how that's written, however the laws are written for that purpose, we would put that in here in addition to...
You could just add that.
We would either add it or, you know, depending on which section it need to be fitted in, we'll create a new section.
Okay, would you be opposed to looking at working on something that your guys could be, and I know we're not set up in an area where you can get training, like she trains, the Louisville ordinance that passed is, it specifies they have to have four hours of training, but they're under a different, we talked about that, they're under a different structure. So we might have to go under a different, based on what the mayor says, yes, we could do two hours of training or three hours of training with the, with everybody, and you'd be okay with that if we could work out something?
Yeah, these things are easily adapted to whatever we need to encompass.
Okay, thank you.
So does our officers, when they're a class now, not learn anything, was when they were talking about domestic violence training or whatever? Is there anything about animal abuse training in those trainings?
Not that I'm aware of. There may be, but, you know, I haven't been to a domestic violence class in quite some years I've been working the street, but I don't know the answer to that.
I'm guessing, I'm guessing not, but do you have anything else? Anybody else?
I just knew that Louisville Metro did something totally different than the rest of the state on training, because don't they train their own officers?
They train their own.
Yeah, they have their own training academy. So I thought maybe, you know, Eastern Kentucky might have some type of different training.
Yeah, we'll look into it.
Anybody else?
Yep.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, next, got our, our other chief wants to come up. Chief Henderson, we've got several questions. We'll start before we get into the fire truck. Chief, if you want to just mention the bid proposal on the, you all should have a copy of that, we had that bid opening, and that's for the...
Yeah, the rescue tools.
Rescue tools.
Is it working too?
Yeah, it's on, just pull it to on.
Okay, we're good. Yeah, we, we put the bid out, we actually only got one, one company that sent anything back. The bid proposal you got there in front of you. So that's the company that actually we've been working with for years, same type of tool that we have now, they're good tools.
Do you remember what we estimated for that? I can't remember.
Seventy.
Seventy, yeah.
So it's ballpark then?
Yeah, and you're going to find out everything. I mean, I'm sure you've, you've seen it, everything is going on.
I just didn't know if it was way over, I couldn't remember what we estimated ballpark figure, so... You say we have this tool already?
No, 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 no. We bought tools from them in the past. These are the older ones that we have, they were the same brand that we, that this is, so they've been good tools.
Yeah, sometimes when you spec these out, some companies just don't bid them because they don't match the specs, what you're requiring them to bid on. So if anybody has any questions?
Is there a timeline? This is priced good for a certain amount of time, because I know it's taking a long time to get anything.
Yeah, he didn't actually say on this, I think we're good.
Says for 60 days.
Eighty-four days.
Sixty days, okay.
And that's 30.
Yep.
Sorry, I don't have, I don't have these on.
Okay.
Yes, down at the bottom, but, I mean, we're putting on the agenda for a...
Okay.
And thirty.
Yep.
Sorry, I don't have.
It should be made within eighty-four days.
I don't have these on.
Yes, down there at the bottom, but, I mean, we'll put it on the agenda for approval, which will be next Tuesday, and then if you all do approve it, then Jamie will move forward with.
Ordering.
Yeah. All right, next, so this is the same issue we're running into as we just spoke about, about cost.
This is a scary one.
Yeah. So over the past few months, obviously, there's quite a bit of discussion has been on the fire truck. And so, obviously specking out the truck and there's been some tweaks and some things done where we went from seventy-five to a hundred. And then, obviously, Jamie's been trying to kind of fall within a pocket and setting out, setting us up for the next fifteen to twenty years on a, on a truck that's going to get us through. And we spend this kind of money, the last truck we bought, obviously, got us through twenty-one years, still operational, but it has to go through that whole refine. And that, then Jamie and I sat down and talked, you know, we were looking at several hundred thousand to get the truck up and running, get it back rehabbed and everything else. So that's why we said rather than put that much money into something, let's look at getting a new truck, what that looks like. And so Chief's been working with a company trying to spec this out. So what we have to do in this case, and Jamie will explain this, is we put our specs together, what we're looking for, what needs to be on the truck, so on and so forth. They spec that out and then you have companies that can put in a bid for that. What we're finding right now is, is that it's about a thirty day window, after thirty days, price goes up. And it's already went up a little bit, not a whole lot, but it's still getting into that pocket. And I think, you know, everyone knows that cost of doing business right now is much higher than what it would have been, you know, a year ago or two years ago. So Chief, I'll let you start from there.
Yeah, and we've been working with several folks, just trying to get an idea of what we, what we're wanting, what the need is for the future. So, um, we, we actually talked to them about what kind of equipment that we're going to put on the truck, you know, area types. So with what we're, what we're putting on the truck, the manpower and all that kind of stuff, they said, yeah, we wouldn't go with a single axle vehicle. So that's why they said dual axle, we might as well go to a hundred, hundred footer. So that's the purpose of that.
We currently have a. We currently are seventy-five.
Yeah, currently we're at seventy-five footer. It will help us with I S O ratings later on down the road, the truck in general, having that truck, it's the older truck at Station Two for that area, and then the newer truck at Station One will definitely help on the I S O rating, so. So it'll be a possibility, you know, we may go down a little bit next time, so.
Yeah, you want to touch just a little bit on the, not to get off of that, but on the other truck, we had a motor issue.
Yeah, yeah, we, of course, that truck is, it's, it's getting up onto its twenty, we had that conversation. We're about there with that, we had a head crack on our other engine that we have. So we're working now off of the older ladder truck. So, and we actually got hit the other night on a run, so we, we almost were at another truck. So, but thank God nobody got hurt and everything was fine, it's still, it's still operational, so. But we had, it's twenty-six thousand dollars right now to replace that. And we waited, it's been out, oh my God, almost two months now.
Yeah, it's been a couple of months.
Yeah, we're just waiting on parts. So the parts are in, we're supposed to be putting it back together.
We don't have any type of insurance to cover that?
No.
That's straight up.
And then the other issue, not issue, the other thing Chief and I've been discussing, we have a truck that was bought back in oh-six, oh-seven.
Yeah.
Tanker truck that, that we're just not utilizing probably to the full capacity, that we may be able to let another department purchase off of us. Obviously, right now, it's a little bit higher, probably we can get out of it more so than what we may be, you know, because everything's up. But this is a discussion Jamie and I are having right now, whether or not that's a possibility of selling that to another department. So I don't know if you want to touch on that a little bit or?
Yeah, yeah, and obviously we need another apparatus to fill those shoes, so. But with the cost and the price of everything going up every year, if you guys are willing and the mayor's willing to look at maybe purchasing another vehicle, at this time, we go ahead and maybe purchase, I know everybody's going to go, yeah, purchase too. But, I mean, it's entirely up to you. The purpose of the tanker, which we're looking at, it's basically there for water, bringing water back and forth. Our department back when, when it was purchased, was smaller on the manpower and on the paid staff. So we didn't have two trucks coming as quick as we do now. So the manpower there and then the amount of water that we're carrying, we just haven't, we haven't needed it in years. It's a two thousand and six, and I think we got six thousand miles on it. It'd be a good truck for maybe somebody in the county areas, but for our city areas, it was purchased because of the trailer parts. But, but our response is so good and our guys are good, kudos to them, especially on that fire we just had. They did an excellent job. I mean, the need for it is, it's just not there anymore. It doesn't have ladders on it, we can't utilize it if a truck goes down, we can't put all the, you know, all the equipment that we need. We can't put the guys on it to run it first because there's just no ladders on it. There's not the equipment that we need for a first hour response, so.
Yeah, it's, if you've ever seen a movie or something like where you see a tanker truck that goes out in the woods, it's just a long cylinder on the back on two wheels. Y'all probably haven't really ever seen it out because it's.
It definitely.
So you're saying you would need something in replacement of that?
Yeah, something like what we bought the last time. Something almost like what we bought the last time, the rescue truck that we purchased the last time.
If we don't, if we don't use that one now, why do we need to replace it?
Well, you have to have so many backup apparatus, if not, you get really hammered on I S O, so. You've got to have that, and like now, if fifty-one, the other night, if the ladder truck would have been down, we would have had to switch to it and we would have had nothing, so.
So how much are we talking about for?
What was it, six hundred, six hundred thousand, a little over six hundred thousand? That was just an estimate.
And we were estimating if we got at least two out of that one. And then looking at the other one we're trying to fix, trying to see how much we can come up with. Of course, this is all money, we're still working on the money side of it, what we can work off of, so. Ultimately, the one, the ladder truck is number one priority, obviously. And then, of course, you know, Chief and I've talked about police cruisers and coming up in next year's budget, we have that. So, um, we're just trying to see where the money can come from and how we can afford to fund it without, you know.
So you're talking about getting another ladder truck and what, what kind of vehicle are you talking about replacing?
It's more like a rescue pumper, like what we bought the last time, I don't know if you see the big box truck that we have. It carries water, rescue tools, it's fully capable when you're, when you're on the scene, it's got everything with it. So you know when it's coming, it's, it's got everything you need, so.
That's the one you'd probably see more, the two you really see is the one he's talking about and then the ladder truck.
Yeah.
The other one's at Station Two. And I think we got that in twenty-twelve, I think it's about, something about right. But that's the update on the fire trucks, Chief's still working through that. Once we get the specs together, we'll put a request out for bid. And then we'll see, and then from there, they kind of, that's when it'll come back to you all for approval, all that kind of stuff. And then, Mr. Russo is working on some funding opportunities that we may have through some of the extra dollars that we were able to acquire. We're trying to make sure that we can use some of this money to help offset that, if we can, that would be great, so.
If we're ready to move forward with that truck, anytime we can get the specs together, and I think we're at that point, so.
Yeah, I think council's ready, I think we're.
Yeah, we want to do it before it goes up any higher.
We just need that approval to move forward, so.
And it takes longer to get.
It's about eighteen months.
Eighteen months now, they moved it up, it was fifteen, fourteen, fifteen months, now they've moved it up to eighteen, so.
So you're going to point to place an order?
No, I gotta get the specs together and then we'll have to go out to bid. So we'll have to get the okay to, I guess, to go out and bid, actually.
So you've pretty much got the specs together, correct?
Pretty much got what we want together.
Yeah, you just have to put it in form to send out to, there's about four companies, three have probably bid on it if I'm guessing.
Yeah, and talking with other local fire departments, the, there's, there's some of them that, some of the manufacturers out there just aren't even, they're just staying away from it just because of what's going on, so. So we may, we may not get very many, so.
The lead time for all of them is about eighteen months regardless of who, what bid we go with?
Top three are, which is K M I, K M E, Sea Graves. Yes, yeah, you're good. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Never cheat when you and Jeff walk up here and say that. All right, so I don't think we have anything else. Mr. Roach.
I really don't have a whole lot, I was looking at the city website, it looks like we are trying to hire some summer help already for like the pool areas that.
Pool area, um.
Looks like through March twenty-fifth, we're taking applications.
Yeah, and Tim and I had a conversation on Friday, we're going to follow up a little bit more this week. I know some of the other pool lifeguards, I guess would be the better thing, we noticed that some of the pay has been upped a little bit above what we're currently paying. We start them off at ten and some of the areas around us are paying fourteen. So I got, Mr. Fox is putting together something for me to kind of give me an idea of what that would look like over the term of the pool. I don't know if we'll be able to get fourteen, we may be able to hit twelve, but as of right now, we don't have enough that's applied that we could open. So we're going to have to make a decision on that and then see what the impact will be over that summer period. Keep it in mind that it's split between two budget cycles. But again, did you ever find out where Fort Knox is at? Okay, so just keep that in mind, so we're working through that, but to your, to your point, yes, we are.
Any other summer type positions that we will need to fill, or just the pool area that we?
Just the pool is probably most of our summer help, I don't think you have anything else back there, do you? Yeah, we have temporary that come back on, that's usually through like lawn care and stuff like that, but that's through the temp service.
And then spring.
Cleanup.
Leaf pickup, not leaf, but.
Spring cleanup.
Yeah.
Yeah, that starts in April, and we'll have, we'll probably mention most of that next meeting. But we have some volunteer groups that come in, we have a volunteer day, that kind of stuff.
But we also do limb, don't we do the limb and leaf pickup like twice a year?
Limb pickup they do, leaf pickup they do in November.
Okay, so limb pickup is in April as well?
I don't have the date on that, do you have the date on that? Huh? I don't, we'll find, I don't have the date on when they're going to start picking up. Is it in April? Okay.
But the ball pickup, the paint pickup and all that, you know?
The only reason, the only reason I'm checking Barbara is because I know they do April cleanup and I just. I just don't know if they're going to do both, because they use the truck that they pick up the limbs with. I'm thinking it's in May, but I could be wrong, but they use the same truck to pick up some of the garbage that they use for limbs, so that's what I'm.
I mean, the only reason I'm bringing this up now is because a lot of times they see the truck having come and gone in their neighborhood and then.
Oh, they'll set it out, that's y'all year round.
I know, I know, so for what it's, for that, I mean, we need to start being ready by April first.
But I'll check, we'll check, I just, I know April cleanup, of course, starts in April. Yeah, so I'll check.
So the spring cleanup is, can you talk to that just a little bit? I mean, that's groups of people just walking the streets and?
We have a day of service where people will come out, usually volunteer groups. I had one in my office last week that's coming to volunteer, a local church, and they wanted to walk Dixie, they're going to do the basins, they're going to choose which one they want to do. So we usually do that, we set that date up on a Saturday, and then we usually do it from usually eight-thirty or so in the morning until about one. We usually have some of the North Harden kids. Now, the past, obviously, the past two years has been, we haven't done it because of COVID.
Right.
And so that's why we just want to make sure that we're going to have people that want to still come out and support and help.
Okay, that's all I have.
Yes, I did want to bring up, I think I talked to Ashley some, our church, Hope Temperature, Church of God in Christ, want to do cleanup. And I had mentioned it to her, so I need to see what is the procedure that we need to do as far as come in, get an application, and target area where we can go out and clean up. I know she told us that we could get the vessels and everything, but I want to be able to take that information back to our church so that we can do that cleanup. So I don't know if you want us to possibly do it the same time as April, but we want to make sure that we go to the area where other grade meets, so that we can clean up.
If you want to do it same day as April, it's up to you.
I checked with our coordinator.
Yeah, check and see if you want to do it our same.
I did mention it to Ashley, I think, last month, you remember?
I did, I did.
So I just want to get that information back to her so that we can know what she needs to do for the church to go ahead and do that. And that'll be on.
Beat you to it, the R S B A is going to be happening.
Who was our speaker, Mayor?
It's going to be the Lieutenant Governor, she'll be.
Thank you, yes. As the mayor already mentioned, Radcliffe Small Business Alliance luncheon is Tuesday, the fifteenth, eleven-thirty at Calvin Community Center. And our guest speaker is our Lieutenant Governor, Jacqueline Coleman. So, and it's open to the public, but I'm sure there will be limited seating. So if you'd like to R S V P, you can do that on the Radcliffe Small Business Alliance website for lunch and to attend. Thank you.
Ms. Owens.
Yes, I'd like to announce a new scholarship that's just been offered to E C T C, it's for the academic year of twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three. It's a twenty-five-hundred dollar scholarship, it'll be split into two for students entering school either this summer or this fall. It's already on the webpage for E C T C, but it is a family scholarship that I created to cover all four of my grandmothers, whose education ranges from second grade to high school. And so when you come from a place where education is not necessarily valued, where my paternal grandmother only got to the second grade, and my maternal grandmother got to the seventh grade, and then there's some mixes in between my, my husband's grandparents. And so it was created with all four of their last names, and it's now on the website, it is, is ready to roll. And as I say, that's how we create legacies, that we invest in our youth so we don't have problems down the road and worry about everything else. So again, check out, and I won't even say the name of it, but go to the website for Elizabeth Town Technical Community College and see what else is going on. There's great opportunities to get financial help and all the other things that make our community great, because you got to start, got to start there, right? You got to start there and educate, and so there's a new one there, that's all I mean.
All right, thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Nothing new this time.
J J, you're giving twenty-five and a dollar?
I can't keep up with it, I can't keep up with it no more.
Just want to say good luck to John Harden tonight, they're playing in the district tournament against Bardstown at eight P M. in Nelson County. So it's in the semifinals, so good luck to John Harden.
All right, thank you all, all right, I want to mention one of our local citizens who's been involved in our community for many years, soccer. Mr. Dyson passed away, I don't know if you know Joe Dyson, but he passed away, so our condolences to their family. And then finally, I just want to mention, so gas prices, obviously a little bit higher than they were a couple of weeks ago. And so like we've been mentioning in most of the council meetings, cost of goods and everything, and I just want to let you guys know as well as our taxpayers that I have been meeting with our departments, Jamie and them, and talking with, just making sure we're managing through this time right now, our fuel prices are high. We went through this a couple of years ago, and our departments did really well as far as getting out. You know, the most, probably most of the money that's spent as far as fuel is through the police department, obviously for very obvious reasons. And so we just make sure that our officers are doing what they need to do. And so you may see them maybe sitting a little bit more than what you're used to, I'm looking at Chris. But that's just because we're trying to slow down on some of our patrol and making sure, because fuel, fuel prices obviously are hitting four dollars. We had that happen, I think, in twenty-twelve. Jeffrey, when did gas prices, I can't remember when gas prices hit that high at one time. But we, you know, we did policing a little bit different, we maybe sat a little bit more. So we are being cognizant of that and we are managing that and we are working through some of that. On the other side of that as well, when it comes to some of the things we're doing in the city, when it comes to building, construction materials and stuff, we're trying to manage those as well, because obviously things are at the height of that. And so, like even considering the F F O building right now, we have been talking with some people to look about doing schematics on drives and what that possibly could look like. I've got a couple of calls into some firms that could draw that up and give us some ideas. Obviously, we know that construction costs and pricing is going to be at the peak right now, so we want to manage some of that. So we're working through a lot of those things, our departments are cognizant of that and we are going to manage that the best we can. Trying to think of anything else, I guess, other than that, next council meeting will be scheduled for April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two at six-thirty. It's going to be here at Radcliffe City Hall, we'll have anything on the agenda, if you guys have anything else you want to add, please just give Ashley a hit. I was looking at, I was looking at, yeah, I was looking at next, March fifteenth, March fifteenth will be the next meeting. I was looking at April, I was looking at the next regular council, like damn, I said April, I'm already in April. So, if anything between now and then, please just reach out to Ms. Russo, and other than that, we don't, anybody got anything else? All right, we're good, thank you all.